Good evening, and I'm going to go ahead and we will begin the evening at six oh one, and we will start with the number of yes. My name is Senator Fyler of the United States of America. It is your republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, guys, it's time for anyone on Zoom or in the audience. If that was nice to keep there a couple of comments, please either ring in and have Zoom or come to the podium and introduce yourself. And proceed.
Yeah. Okay. You're. Yes. That's enough.
Okay.
Good evening.
Evening.
Hello.
Good evening, citizens.
God. Fellow members of the, uh, what the town counting as well as, uh, respected town manager. I am Joel Chosky. I am a member of the candidate county commission. I represent, it's called District Two, which runs from the, uh, metropolis of Miami. Neighborhood Pittsburgh. Usually I pack two sandwiches, but maybe not true. A lot of things are going on and going off of that. We have put together another budget this next year with our budget committee, which is made up of official that are elected. And countless who are appointed by town managers. And the process is is that they completed their budget where they about a week ago. Last week, the commissioners got together. We've got to see if we could refine it and change it in some ways. But quite frankly, by two to one vote, the budget was passed and some ideas that were suggested such as, uh, why don't we just cut it by an overall three percent? Uh, fell on deaf ears in both at the commission level and at the budget committee level. No one seconded the motion. So what you're going to save and be available on our website, if not right now, within the next day or so, will be the finished product of a budget. It raises the amount of spending to a little over twenty-five million dollars. Uh, it's an increase of about two point three million dollars over last years. Now, I'm not here to argue what's in that budget, but I came to tell you that the tax rate that you read in the paper of nine point six percent is a spending increase. It's not a tax rate. The tax rate actually figures in about thirteen point five percent overall for everybody. But of course, towns do different things. Makes me kind of mad that we're not being talking about apples and apples here. But I will tell you this. We have an opportunity if we can turn on enough people to do a little work. To perhaps get the state to help fund something unfunded mandates, which in most of the cases that I have witnessed in the last two years related to the ZEAL operation. There are two things that have happened there. The number one thing is that they have passed a medical assistance treatment program, which means that we do not send them to a doctor, the doctors are on site. We do not send them for dental care, the dentists are on site. We do not send them to mental health care, the psychiatrists are on site. And what I'm getting at is that we have been almost a minute cutting sitting in our tier of various times to provide this care, which has been mandated by the state legislature and the governor to provide. This year, they thought a few more other weaknesses of them, such as we now have to go insane a jeopardy if not to to take and be with all of these patients that may have gone to a senti- after one for evaluation. We have to provide the transportation as well as twenty-four seven coverage. What I'm getting at is that like your government here in the town, my government, we're also subjected to higher government agencies taking insane orders. You have to do this. It's a mandate. It may be as frustrating as it is, I will do that mandate as best as I'm charged to do. What I'm asking you to do is very simple. Wouldn't you contact your elected representatives? By phone, by mail, by personal contact, I hang around some of the towns a lot, so it just hasn't forced, and I are very good friends now. Uh, the point is is that you have to talk to these people. You have to put this agenda either first in their minds. Last year, we received one point one million dollars from the state to help pay for this mandate, which cost us almost two million dollars. This year, they've done it differently. We, as a group, that I said, we as the county commissioners, we all asked that we receive about fourteen million dollars total to finance this medical mandate. The end result has been four million dollars. So whereas we received one point one million last year, we will be lucky to get five hundred thousand this year, this break, which we were counting on receiving, we're hoping it would continue. So we could use that to keep our taxes down. This is the best way to do it. We need to be a squishy wheel out there in order to get them to understand that this is important to people. We're going to find ways for the state to forgive and spend share. I don't know why in the last few years that it seems to me that the state legislature and the governor have both ignored their accounting facilities. And we were very lucky with pandemic aid that we were able to use to fix facilities. We spent almost six million dollars of that money fixing the facility so you wouldn't have to be doing that this year, the next year, the year after. Big advantage to everyone, but it was a necessary need. It wasn't done because we wanted to do it. It was done because the place was leaking, there were things falling in. I also provided for you a couple of things. Number one, as I said, if you go to our website, you can find out budget differences into that information right now. Number two, I did provide for you, uh, information as to a brief thing about what you could say to them, just a quick message. Most important, quite frankly, in your messages, who you are, what your name is, where you live. There is an addition process that goes on, and we have a council that knows all about this thing. It is important to start counting up how many contacts did you have on some of these issues, some of the type situations that they're in. And then finally, uh, I also included for you a separate page, which gives you the name, address, email address of your local representatives. This is not just confined a little to Wuthrum. This is confined to the state. So we need to take and encourage some of my fellow commissioners across the state and do the same thing I do, to generate more young managing visits. So I hope I went in my twenty-five, thirty minutes, if you'd like to ask me questions.
Um, with respect to Maine Municipal Association, where have they been on this?
Come on, they're working with us.
I mean, they have access to, you know, everybody across the state. I, I don't understand how they can't influence this. They seem to influence a lot of stuff up there. How, I mean, this is a huge mandate, and it's every, every year we see this.
And last year, the only outside group besides the commissioners was Nicklans. And they did the best job of writing up the issues. Now, the question is, is that you can write them up, you take the next step and really make the content. Because they're all busy, we know they're all busy. And right now, we're in a situation where, if I understand it correct, we're basically trying to get the session over with by the fifteenth of May.
Awesome.
I don't, I don't, I don't. Don't, don't go on vacation until August is really right.
Oh, we'll be here in August.
I, I just looked at it, I think there was an intention made, and that's a first of thing, but I still think they made the, the part of role, so to speak, so small that a lot of people will drop out on the sidelines. I don't want us dropping out because I won't see.
I think everybody should call. I mean, I think it, it, we need to, but I just, I mean, it's just going up by double digits every, every single year. It's crazy.
And, and I'm not even discussing, uh, the negotiations, we've got five millions down there. And I do know we were behind, but we don't have to be ahead of everyone either. This is a very difficult process.
Uh, thank you for sharing, Chosky. So, you know, my concern is the state is already out of my overspent funds. You know, I don't see solutions. That's my problem.
Yeah.
I don't understand why the county isn't billing interest. I don't understand, you know, if it's the statute that's not allowing us to do that, then get that in there, get that changed.
Um, they're not billing insurances?
No, I don't believe so.
Well, we can't, we can't.
Yeah, it's the statute provision.
That's what the whole problem is, in fact, I.
Which is ridiculous.
I could have watched one, uh, just, just read that simply said, it counts before you go to jail and after you.
Well, the state needs to buy some type of, uh, funds for, for managing air volume capacity or something. But there needs to be a funding source identified because I will not trust that the administration is just going to pour over money for this problem. It's not going to happen.
I think the other regular in this thing is that technically, we would receive about ten percent of our total jail counts as a separate inmate, uh, type of, uh, repayment. Now, we're looking at over three thousand people potentially coming through our jail in a year. It's around thirty-four, thirty-five thousand statewide going through the jails. And I know we have eight bird risk sitting in those jails right now in, in Augusta. I also know that part of our problem is like you read the paper, we can't get them out of there because we can't find lawyers to represent them. And then we can't get, it's a sketch. Uh, it's a very frustrating process. But I am hopeful because we're doing a great thing with this medical program. See, I, I run both sides, so yeah, really, yeah. This medical treatment program is really making an effect on addiction, which is what it was really intended for. These people are getting their medicine, they're being watched. Uh, I'm not saying some don't share it around, I'm saying they're being watched. When they're in the market, give it a program so that it will continue up to sixty days at a minimum right afterwards, which is the best thing you can do is not get them to turn around and look for it. But, you know, for they, uh, it's also for they will regret it, or it's something. I must, it's, it's a great job. But the point is, is that that's frustrating. The other frustrating thing, as I said, typically we need about ten percent of what we, uh, spend on inmates back. All of a sudden, that ten percent is a danger of not being paid. And one of the problems we have is that we're retired to have our budget into the state by the end of this month. And we need, we need the state to act on this thing so we can do a true budget. So anyway, can I count on you? I'm telling you, guys are already there in front of you. They, uh, passed a resolution, this is committed, they've sent people in, and, uh, Mayor Hodges is having a great job in, uh, getting them following, so we're going to do.
A few phone calls, I will say, make a difference. So if everybody on a council that can make a few phone calls, that'll make a huge difference. It'll raise it to a whole new level.
We'll make a few first of visit.
I'll talk tomorrow when I have.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I've talked to some of you, uh, via social media, stuff like that, but I had a proposal I sent in to, uh, start a disc golf course on middle school, high school grounds. Um, we've already done, uh, I do play a game, which is Universal Play Disc Golf. Um, you may have read about it in the KJ, where I invited a lot of national touring pros up to teach, uh, with the visit instructor at the middle school, um, for a afternoon. Um, my next step would be to kind of get a disc golf course going in unused land. Um, there's multiple makers that we looked at, uh, behind a softball field that could be potentially used. Um, some of the great things about disc golf and why I think that we should be able to utilize uh, said property is just to give a little bar entry for a lot of our students that may not be able to participate in football, baseball, anything along those lines. Um, a physical outgoing sport. Um, it's my first time doing this, so, uh, pardon me, I'm a little nervous. Um, I know that it's between, um, you know, as a product, you guys, uh, Joel Stoben passed it along, and it's going to be between you and the school board. Um, but I just wanted to kind of follow up and see if there's any questions or anything else that I can answer to, uh, kind of help us.
So after talking to you earlier, um, I just wanted the council to know, there's not going to be any cost to the community, correct?
No, correct. Uh, so I run a company called Space Athletics. We are a disc golf manufacturer. Um, we're at a moment right now, but part of that is growing the sport and doing so. I really like to start facilitating, um, disc golf clubs between schools. I know Oak Hill is in the process of putting a disc golf in, I have a whole disc golf course. Um, but we would be pretty much covering all the costs, uh, to create a nine hole disc golf course is cheaper than installing a basketball course or a pickleball court or anything like that. Under fifteen thousand, uh, we would be building it based off of myself and other volunteers, uh, with the maintenance and everything else.
Uh, what about, can you tell these guys about the contact you've had with Joel on our standing expenses right now?
Yeah, so, um, before writing this proposal, I reached out to Joel. He was my, uh, football coach, so he had close connections and everything. Uh, he recommended that I write a proposal that he would send to the superintendent, um, and then pass it over to you guys, who would then pass it over to the school board. So I was kind of following it as a line.
And you have, uh, the ability, you have the intentions of kind of keeping it going and, uh, kind of heading the whole, uh, like the league and all that stuff.
Yeah, so like I said, um, I would really like to, you know, facilitate school clubs, um, myself and Brendan, who is another uh, winter resident and, uh, student, um, would donate our time to the course to facilitating, um, any sort of, um, you know, classes or teaching or anything like that. Universal Play Disc Golf also said that they would help us with grant writing. Um, and since they did one event at the middle school, they said that they could also come back, uh, when we do main states, which is a tournament that I run, uh, Island Farms, so their largest event, uh, in England. And we get that have, you know, people come up, we could teach high schoolers. Um, part of Universal Play Disc Golf is they actually have an entire school curriculum, um, that there is a book that we could work with physical educators and stuff within our school district, um, to help continue teaching the fundamentals of disc golf, um, and the sport, how it applies to, you know, even step. Um, where if you go outside, you can keep up with the course and everything else and, you know, teach mathematics with the rotation of the discs and all that sort of stuff.
I think it's a great idea.
Okay, um, yeah, somebody's got to pay for this somehow. So are you planning on having private users?
So my goal for this course would be free to, um, students as well as winter presidents. Uh, one thing that is, uh, employed a lot by, uh, courses in the state, because in the state of Maine, we're actually kind of an outlier. We have a lot of pay to play. Um, what we would implement would be kind of an honor box or a donation box. Uh, the goals of those donations would be to go back to, um, school sports such as football, other booster club, um, activities and sports.
So how do you get paid for all this?
I don't.
You do all this free by all the equipment?
Yep. I have connections, I've been in the sport, I've been playing for fifteen years. Uh, like I said, I run my business, I have connections with other disc golf manufacturers that manufacture baskets. Um, when we wrote this proposal, we were kind of factoring in two hundred and fifty bucks. We have a couple of cord, uh, a couple of manufacturers that would donate baskets or give it to us at cost. So thought space and, you know, community fundraising would cover the costs of managing our building the course as well as installation, signage, all that sort of stuff.
So you'll be open to the public. It would be free in the public, going to be free to the school to use, and whichever format they chose.
Exactly, and like I said, my end goal is to get, uh, school, high school, disc golf clubs going, uh, working with other school districts to try to get.
Next question, tweet.
Okay.
Okay, uh, during the time of public use, um, who is going to, uh, indemnify the school district if there should be an injury or something?
So that's something that I'm willing to look into. I know that that was a question for me as well, uh, speaking with them. Um, I am. My question was, is with the direct trail and the public use of that, what's the insurance policy on that? Because a lot of, from everyone that I've talked to that have built, uh, school courses, they said usually their general liability would fall kind of similarly on that because this golf itself is a low risk sport. Pretty much hiking with a purpose.
Well, I, I support it, before I supported it, we didn't have to find out these things for a fact.
Yeah.
Well, the thing is, the thing is, is if you, if you do cross-country skiing on those trails, it's the same viability.
Yeah.
I mean, it's public, it's public land. And I mean, yes, we, we should find it out, but it's public land, so, I mean, if you're.
Things that will be, will be booked out. So, do, essentially is, um, so this would fall in, uh, probably falling under the recreation. Just on a grid, so I want you to follow up with Lonnie, Steve.
Yep.
Um, reach out to him, then, uh, put an application for our rec committee.
Okay.
Um, I'll get you that info. Um, and, um, the rest of it should fall into, you know, I'm program.
Yeah, like I said.
Recreation would be school. Well, we have to, we depend, it probably reflects because other people won't be able to even go to school. So, but Lonnie's very familiar with how, how that works with Joel.
Yeah, speaking with Lonnie, it's like, well, where's the money going from?
Yeah.
Like, you know, they got that in their control.
Yeah. And, um, and they're still obviously, you know, working on, um, the school or, oh, that's the way in.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
A line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So your proposal's behind softball field, each that is driving direct rail system back there.
Um, it's adjacent to, so where you have the entry to the direct trail that goes down and arounds. This is more towards the middle school.
Right.
Uh, I actually have. My real foot. So I use the hunting app to kind of scout out property lands. Once this is.
Sure. Be careful. Your question is, is that's all school property?
Yeah.
The state does not account on, it's all solely owned? The town is all property.
Yeah, so, so it's, uh, it's all pound-owned property, Jim, but it's school property.
Maybe school property, we need to direct rail blocks.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well. Is there anything on it now?
There's nothing back there.
No trail or anything?
No. We would have to blaze the trails ourselves and, uh, keep up with it and everything else. Uh, what would be to have benches sign and that sort of thing.
Would you? Would you expect, what about, what about the parking, that sort of thing there? So.
It would increase, um, a little bit. Disc golf is an extremely popular sport in the state of Maine. Uh, the Lewis and Auburn area specifically was voted number one destination in the entire country per capita. Um, the reason why, uh, being between Augusta and Lewis and Auburn, with two of you are in between, you'd probably have a lot of people trying to come out, try, uh, you know, participate in a course, spending money at local businesses, Subway, getting drinks, all that sort of.
But yes, and don't get me wrong, I think I like the idea, I just, I'm just trying to think of all, like, like the, you know, the golf, and the, that's all.
Yeah, so if you look at the, uh, outline of the course, um, I was kind of proposing that the backside of the gym, that doesn't get utilized all the time. Uh, people could park there, they could have entry to following that same paved path down behind the softball field. Um, it would loop up and back down and come out behind the softball field so they could have easy access, it would be one giant loop. Parking hopefully wouldn't, uh, overfill the shaped path. Yeah.
Um, I'll try to do it real quick. Um, it was pointed out that we allow the public, say, for instance, to use the Roger, the red trail. So didn't, pretty much you want to do, and allowing the public to use the Roger Red Trail is that you're asking for donations, and that could be construed as asking, charging a fee. Okay?
Yeah.
So that would be a commercial use. We would, we would really need to have some kind of assurance, this is going to be impacting two words in a row. Some kind of assurance that, um, the insurance issue has been addressed.
Um, I, I think I understand the question, but we're not going to be using the Roger, uh, Roger Red Trails adjacent to it.
No, we don't charge, the point was, we don't charge anything to the public to use the Roger Red Trail.
Okay.
And in your facility, you said you have a donation box for the public if they so chose to donate. And that could be construed as a fee. Okay, and so we need that insurance question carefully looked over before I agree at least.
Thank you very.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Then, new underwriter application, N S X twenty-six. That are named recognition here to come, Pat Bays. Hello, thank you. Um, are there any comments or questions from the audience?
Just, just so the council knows, I'm the police chief and the police department has no insurance about this application.
Uh, I have a question. Um, well.
Ma'am, ma'am, will you please come to the microphone?
Uh, the Russ want to stay home tonight?
Yeah, I think.
Uh, if, what is the intent to serve alcohol, obviously not bring it to vehicles, correct? The intent is to serve it only inside.
Inside.
Yeah.
I mean, I think there'll be, uh, the big container area, it's like, um, I'm still working on, you know, whether that is applicable, I, I announce you, um, at a big deal, we're definitely not going to be serving it out of cars.
Yeah. But, but, well.
I mean, that's, and I know we've had the business for seventeen years and always been a little bit on the fence, and we really like the family style, you know, restaurant, and so we had never, which is for, right? We feel like we're just missing a little bit of that market because we don't offer it. So, you know, we're trying not to make it a big thing, but also want to take that off.
And I, I would have added, the state would have some sort of input on, um, where, you know, as far as the regulations.
Oh, yeah.
Where, whether you could use that, I think they would agree or not, but I don't have a problem with it, but, or even outside, I think it's okay.
Um, I would also just make sure that it's included on the floor line. So we, special authentication of where you would be, whether it's inside, I did see the other four seating just. And thank you.
I think I did on the floor, then I tried to put the picketing tables on the side of the building again. Now I have just.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any questions? All right, thank you, we will go ahead and close the bell with the period, six twenty-nine, moving on to item fifty-three, consideration of a new license application from Path City's driving.
Some of them.
Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor, thank you very much. Moving on to item fifty-three, discussion this year, twenty-three, twenty-four, draft comprehensive annual financial report. With the town auditor and honors, uh, Oreni, Kirsten, and Wella, Lele. Thank you for coming today. In our video presentation. Yeah, let's, uh. Let's, let's move on.
Yeah.
Take it, control.
All right, so it goes time to jump down to item fifty-seven, while we're waiting. Certification, someone? Uh, approval of the minutes of March third, seventeen, and February first, twenty-two, five.
The most. The most.
Second.
All in favor, any experience? Thank you. All right, and we're going to ask you, item twenty-four.
Thanks for having me. Uh, so I'm here to talk about the results of the twenty-twenty-four fiscal year audit. Um, we put together a brief overview of the audit itself. Um, as usual, if you have any questions or comments, feel free to jump in at any time. And, as I was, yeah, I'm sure of this. Smooth. Third second page here is an annual audit itself. So to give you an idea of the timing, uh, we were actually here on June seventeenth to do some of the pre-audit work. Which at that time, uh, we do some of the testing for compliance and internal controls. And then we also gather some information for the audit. And then the audit itself took place the week of October seventh. As far as the results of the audit, uh, the financial statements did receive an unmodified opinion. Uh, we're just. On those. And then there's another report that is issued with the financial statements. It is reported by government auditing standards. And under those standards, uh, we are required to test controls as they relate to financial reporting. So here we come in and we test internal controls on a rotation basis. So long as there were no issues noted in the prior audit. And the results for that, uh, there were no material weaknesses. Which a material weakness would be the highest level of finding, it would be something that would be considered systemic and something that another would be concerned about. A step down from that would be a significant deficiency, uh, which doesn't rise with the level of a material weakness, but it is important enough for us to bring into your attention. And then below that would be just other comments. We did have one significant deficiency related to the middle school cash receipts. Um, which we were actually here a while ago, we did a separate meeting with the, the school committee, and we went over the results for that. Um, basically the comment was that the middle school had certain procedures in place. Uh, they have a second person who was supposed to be reviewing and signing off on cash deposits. And they weren't following that procedure, so our recommendation is just to reinforce, reinforce that procedure. The reason that it rose to the level of a significant, significant deficiency is because of the number of deposits that we found that didn't have a secondary um, signature. Um. So that was basically the results of that. And then there's also a report that's required by the uniform guidance. So because the town uh, receives and spends over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal grants, it's required to undergo what's called a single audit. And under the single audit, we, um, as the auditors come in and we test some of the larger federal grants for the town. Um, typically it's on the school department side. Uh, and this past year, we had two federal grants that we tested. The first was the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund, uh, which is also known as P S R or S R. Uh, and then there's also the school nutrition cluster, which is your school fund program. And under those requirements, uh, there were no findings, no material weaknesses, or significant deficiencies, so clean compliance audit. The next few graphs we have on here are an overview of the, the numbers from the financial statements themselves. This first graph that we have is the general fund of fund balance. It's over the last five fiscal years and it's broken down into the different categories for fund balance. Uh, so you can see that over the past fiscal, five fiscal years, uh, the town's general fund fund balance has increased significantly. It's actually increased two point five million dollars over the last five fiscal years. It went from two point three million in twenty-twenty to five forty-nine in twenty-twenty-four. It's broken down into three separate categories. The first is a non-spendable category, so really thin splitter or green at the very top. That is the portion of your fund balance that is non-spendable because it basically has already been spent. It's usually in the form of inventory or prepaid expenditures or tax-required property. So that portion of your fund balance is not readily available to be used. The next portion is the assigned fund balance, and those are amounts that are internally designated for the next year's fiscal week expenditures as well as employee benefits. And then the unassigned fund balance is the portion of the fund balance that remains after you have put accounts into those other categories. And in fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, fund balance did increase by about six hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Now, the town does have a, a fund balance policy and we'll go into that a little bit further into the presentation. This next graph is an overview of the general fund revenues. It's a subject of actual analysis and looking at some of the larger. Looking at some of the larger um, budgeted actual variances, I can see that taxes and lean costs were lower than budgeted. Uh, that was due to increase in the amount of taxes that were collected after fiscal year end. So if property taxes are collected two months after the fiscal year end, they're required to be deferred. Uh, so you can actually show that as well. Excise taxes were higher than budgeted, uh, due to an increase in registrations as well as an actual increase in the prices of vehicles that were being registered. State revenue sharing was higher than anticipated as that amount is typically budgeted conservatively. Other intergovernmental revenues were lower than budgeted due to lower homestead reimbursements originally anticipated. Charges for services were higher than budgeted due to an increase in build ambulance services and solid waste fees. And investment income came in about four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars higher than budgeted due to improved industries. So in total, revenues uh, exceeded the budget by about seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which was about four percent of the budget.
I have a question.
Yeah.
When you're looking at this general government figure of three hundred and ninety, you know, thousand dollars, and you're looking at why that was over budget?
Yeah, 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 slide ahead.
Oh, okay, all right, sorry. Oh, I'm looking at the wrong one, okay. I'll save it, now save it.
Look at that next.
I'm saying, yeah, that's why, that's why.
To.
That's why I didn't even look so nice, I wasn't even looking up here, all right, yeah, but I'll ask the question anyways. Um, or do you want me to wait till you get to the next slide, so? I don't have the slide that you're on, so I thought it was. Yeah, go ahead. Here it is.
So this. The general expenditures, same type of finances, it's going to actually. You know, those large variances. Uh, the general government category was under then by about three hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars, uh, due to health insurance, dental insurance, and workers' compensation premiums, all of which were lower than anticipated. Uh, some of that did have to do with some V I C's and positions. In addition, there was a contingency amount included in the budget, and not all of that was used in the, in that one for. Public assistance, uh, expenditures were over budgeted due to an increased demand for general assistance. Unclassified expenditures of, were expenditures that the council approved under M E M A, uh, but they were not actually budgeted. And then in total, uh, expenditures before transfers were under budgeted by about three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, which is about three percent of the budget.
Okay, here's my question. When you're looking at the three hundred and ninety thousand dollars as a variance. You're, you're saying over here that there was, it was under budget due to health insurance, dental, workers' comp, all being lower. But yet. I don't have the figures right in front of me yet, but I guarantee you on some of this stuff. Were over budgeting, were even increasing it over what it was last year. So what, 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 what I see here is three hundred and ninety thousand dollars over that we selected over. What we budgeted, is that correct or not correct?
It's, it's not, it's not correct, so we're talking about expenditures here, so.
Right, but it's expenditures, but you, but, but you, you budgeted three million dollars and you've actually expended this, but my point is. Is that the three hundred and ninety thousand dollars you budgeted for, but you didn't spend all of it? So my point is what?
I would submit to you that the more important is the three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars of total expenditure. So that equates to three point three percent of the total budget. So when you were budgeting ten point seven million dollars and you come within three point three percent of that, I think that's actually pretty sound budgeting.
I'm not saying it's sound budgeting, but what I'm saying is. The three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars is what you're, we're putting back into the, the unassigned, right? It goes back into the, the slush fund.
The, it's not a slush fund.
Well, well, it's, it's.
It's, 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 it is the, it is the, it is the, no, it's not, it is the, it's the general fund.
Same, but here's my point in this whole matter. Is, you, when you were looking at the budget this year, I can, I know those figures went up even more than they did last year. So if we weren't collecting it last year. Why are we budgeting at that level again this year?
That's not.
While we were spending it, but what I'm saying is you're budgeting still for.
So.
Because you're going to, budgeting to expend that.
So. So, so it's. So it's important to note that you want to end up in the black, right?
And I get that.
And, and, well, please let me finish. And. Uh, we are like right at where the, uh, the policy says we should be with our unassigned fund balance. And lastly, I send to you guys every month, the monthly financials. We are now seventy-five percent through the fiscal year, and I think if you look at those financials, we are at seventy-five percent total of the expenditures through, for this year's budget. So all I'm suggesting is, is that I think we are doing a really sound job of both budgeting and then controlling expenses to ensure that we're not going over.
Or raising funds?
Yes, yes.
There, Smither would know if I were hitting on this topic.
That's where I'm concerned.
And I was going to, uh, talk about, so last year, it looks like. The gap on the general public may increase a bit. Uh. Hundred and five. But there are variables that have changed from that time too.
And I, and I get that, but I'm just saying is, it's, to me.
I just want to make sure where you go. Thanks.
I did want to point out, um, that category for general government does include a lot of different expenditure lines, one of which is actually the carry forward for the crew compensated absences. So every year you vote to carry forward a hundred thousand dollars to.
Okay.
For future crew compensated absences.
Yep.
In fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, you only spent seventeen thousand against that lot.
Okay.
So that created a positive variance of eighty-two thousand, that is included in that now.
Okay.
Should break that separately. That would be.
Well, it is, it is in the. This is just a summation.
Actually, next time I would note it in the side, maybe perhaps. In the notes so that we see, can see that, because I knew that we were, you know.
Yeah, I agree. Can you? Can you go with that one a little bit? Seems like we fell short a bit. You didn't talk about the school. They heard the school background, capital reserves down here. Very. Pretty high roll.
So the, you're, you're talking about the transfers capital reserves?
Yeah.
That budget number includes the amounts that are voted to be carried forward, and you don't necessarily always transfer to the capital reserves or what you voted to carry forward. So that's why there's that. One issue. So this next slide takes a look at the general funding unassigned fund balance, um, as well as it does talk about, uh, the town's fund balance policy. So this town does have a fund balance policy that has a targeted unassigned fund balance, twenty percent of the budget, which is about two point four months of operating expenditures. The unassigned fund balance, and this is shown over the last five fiscal years. So you can see that, um, as a percentage of the budget, it started out at twelve point nine percent, increased to a high of twenty-one percent, and then is back down to eighteen percent. In twenty-twenty-four. And it has actually steadily decreased over the last two fiscal years. So based on the targeted unassigned fund balance, uh, unassigned fund balance should be about four point one million dollars, and the current, uh, the twenty-twenty-four unassigned fund balance was three point seven million. So it was just showing that a budget, budgeted amount or target amount by about three hundred and eight seven thousand dollars. Any questions there?
Uh, next question is here, we had. The shortfall below target is a hundred and four thousand. Is that best difference? Nineteen to eighteen. I'm talking from twenty-twenty through to twenty-twenty-four. Why there's a difference of two hundred thousand this year below?
All right, follow your question.
Please, for one of these figures. That. Okay, that's up there.
You can, uh, you can come back to it if you want.
Yeah.
This next graph is an overview of the general fund expenditures. Um, so each category represents a piece of the panel of total expenditures. Um, and then on the next page, uh, if you have the printed version, we also have it on, on three categories. So you kind of, uh, here they do. I'm going to tell you that, um, these all pretty much stay the same. The, there is a slight fluctuation of about one percent in some of the categories, but overall, they pretty much stay the same. And I will point out that a couple of these categories say zero percent. It's not because we didn't have expenditures in those categories, it's just that they're so small, they, they're less than one percent. So the unclassified and publicists will show up as zeros. And then the other category, uh, that is new on the nearest capital outlet. And that is one percent. And what that is, is you had voted for a carry board to be used for paving. Typically, you would have those, um, expenditures in the reserves, but this year it was actually in the general fund. So that's where the capital outlet is now. This is just an overview of some of the town's other significant funds. We do exclude, uh, any of the grant funds and any of the trust funds, just because those are restricted in purpose, uh, so they can be used for general operations. Uh, these particular funds are the capital reserves and the school operating fund. So just as a reminder, in the financial statements, the school department is actually presented as a separate fund. So all of these numbers that we have been talking about up, up until now have excluded school department's funds. So the first, uh, graphs are the town capital reserves of the last four fiscal years. And the town's capital reserves decreased by a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, which is about nineteen percent over the prior fiscal year. That mostly had to do with the planned spending on the radio upgrade project, uh, some paving, and then, uh, the spending down on lease proceeds that were received in the prior fiscal year. The school operating fund actually decreased six hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, or seventy-seven percent over the prior fiscal year. That was primarily due to a transfer, uh, to the school department capital reserves of six hundred thousand dollars from the school operating fund, as well as, uh, the twenty-twenty-four expenditures for the school fund that actually exceeded their revenues. So they had a significant drop in their fund balance. And then the school capital funds also decreased by one point three million dollars, or two hundred and thirty-five percent over the prior fiscal year, and that had to do with the planned spending of prior year debt proceeds uh, for energy improvements, as well as the proceeds that were received of their school revolving loan, uh, through the state. And that is it for the brass, is anyone having any thoughts? Or any questions at all about the audit in general?
Uh, this question was to Anthony, can we get an updated copy of this that has all the pages? It's in the, it's in the, I couldn't, it was even helping last week, all right. So you said you got included in the general operational side of things, trusts and whatnot, where, where is that account for?
Those are in the financial statements, they're in other funds. Uh, so in the back of the financial statements, you'll see you have some. Uh so in the back of the financial statements, you'll see you have some providing um statements, and those include the town's grants, the school department's grants, and and all those other funds.
We hear you're ready to be auditing year over year. Um is there any um consideration for accounts that you've come across at work? Is there a way to determine if you came across a different number? So there. Is there a way to identify if there are any accounts missed previously? That you were able to look out for in a current for the next year in in the.
When you say accounts, you mean?
One, so one, looking at the accounts, number of accounts that people have through the town that have a designation, whether it has a like one, three, zero, or one, or.
Is that like a new capital reserve?
Yeah, or whichever. As an auditor, you should be able to determine whether there's a discrepancy in account, the number of accounts, right?
Yes, because there's a new.
Want to come, want to come to the mind too.
If there's a new cap, who's are the more special that we have? He does catch that and see the last questions about that. One that comes to mind is uh seventy-seven thousand for the ambulance uh stuff where everybody got care, that's one. He.
Yeah, that's right.
That's.
Yeah, the.
Yes. Did he release a statement on that?
It's included in the financial statements.
Okay, so you do highlight the any additional accounts that are either been created or found that make them not included in previous files?
Yes, we wouldn't, we would include any new revenues, new expenditures, any good funds that were created.
I can say, does he like highlight those accounts? Like saying, this is a new capital account basically? Or the accounts from attendance in prior years that are not included in the audits? You want to get it straight.
I don't believe we've run into that in the past. Uh usually what we do when we do our audit is we get reports directly from the accounting software. Then it includes all of the funds and all of the accounts of the town.
So so your auditing process does not include having for the same amount of accounts year over year?
Uh you're talking about individual revenue or expenditures? No, we don't compare them. Uh we get reports to make sure that they include everything.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Sure.
We'll see the audits that you would.
Very the motions. Um I'd like to make a motion that we uh accept the draft comprehensive financial report um C A C A F R uh from Runyon, Kristen, and Willa.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, I have a second consideration, so the post very many. So we did pronounce the.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, we can have this stuff. Yes.
Again.
Thank you.
Nations, uh we named what we enclosed in our letter to you dated March the first. Um we outlined a proposal for several projects uh attempted in coming through to the year, coming season. And they are around for a hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars. Last week, I told you that this is an ambitious undertaking, uh we did was cautious, fully cautious, we'd say it would be this figure or less depending on weather, staffing, um and unexpected uh occurrences that might come up during course of work. Uh nevertheless, uh some of what we've included in this number uh are projects that are unfinished in prior years which have authorized principally. The Maple Cemetery stone restoration was authorized earlier by the council who included it, so it's not left out of your thinking this year. Uh we have uh several other projects here that we've come up with for this year. But I think I'd like to just sort of uh call your attention to go back that in two thousand nineteen, when we set the committee, when the council set the committee, uh there was uh an observation, maybe it was six hundred thousand dollars sitting in in a cemetery account, but our cemetery is all neglected. And so how could these two things both function? So the committee was put together to recommend a program to address the negligence uh in a thoughtful way. And we've attempted to do that by offering a one cemetery at a time approach that began with Glen Side, continued to Maple. And this year, if you'll prove, we'll extend to Maple Cemetery on our way to getting all five in the years ahead. We don't want to give the fund too hard. We're not asking for any additional money. We're asking to authorize expenditures from monies that are already there in the town's control. Um I guess the question raised at the last meeting, it made me wonder whether it's more important to maintain a fund or more important to maintain the cemeteries. And my argument to you would be, or the purpose for which that fund was created overrides even a number of some of some undetermined amounts of money on hand in future work. Uh there was a letter that a member, Mike Looby, wrote, or perhaps you've seen, who suggested that if we were to catch us up in planned way that we have outlined, but it continues as we have planned. And we reached a point where all five cemeteries, we had the stomach straightened, the fence prepared, the wheels that we. Then there would be a remainder. Oh, no, it was then that would be appropriate to make a dedicated trust fund out of the remainder. And that was a suggestion that might came up with us. We offer that to you for your consideration if you feel that we're proceeding in a way that isn't isn't best, but my own view as chairman of committee is that it's good for us to prepare a plan and come to you. This time of year, you're talking budgets, lay a plan before you, see if what we'd like to do makes sense to you. Uh and and a lot of committee determination uh on that. If not, which of these projects should we curtail, uh which neglect do we wish to live with? Uh as we maintain the funds as they currently decide, so. With that said, I'll stop. I'll see us different questions.
One question, uh so under some of these you have listed here good, bad estimates. Um so may I ask the process about how you want to get those?
Well, we have uh the these first project in our temple was Maple Cemetery is thirty-one thousand three forty-two. That's a firm estimate. That is what remains to be paid on a contract that was left a couple of years ago, I think. And so that is a firm number. Uh we also have a firm uh quote from the company that treated us so well in the past on East Winter. The twenty-three thousand four hundred is a firm number. Uh the two gate repairs, uh they're entry signs, they're one at Maple, one at East Winter, are both estimates because as we've chased those projects through the years, the costs have increased. Uh we it's been difficult to find someone who will do the necessary artwork to to do the restriations, so those are principally our our estimates, if you will. Okay. The repairs to the road at Glen Side, we had a forty-five thousand dollar number in two thousand twenty-two. Steve Kennedy has chased the guy that gave us that number for all the time that I've been trying to get it for the number boy for these meetings. We haven't been successful in that, so we just put a a round number to that uh that would be matched with some sort of a concrete proposal, and we finally get one before we were to go forward. That is the least um specific number on the page.
Is that um? Is that road repair? Um is that gravel?
Yes, if if you go to Glen Side Cemetery in particular.
Right, gravel, yeah.
See that you're traveling between.
Right.
Traveling down a rut.
Yeah.
Basically, so we're trying to.
I've been there a long time.
We're trying to restore that to something that'll bear traffic um in in a way that doesn't make the problem worse, as those evolving sides came in with.
Have you tried Jim Hopkins?
What I would stress.
Are you doing all the books?
Is what what I would like the council to know.
Oh, that's true.
Is that the hands on management of these projects falls to the Sexton, to the Public Works Department, and we we don't get into bill bank, we don't get into supervising the work, we don't get into specifications.
Okay.
What we are trying to do is to recommend an appropriate uh dipping, if you will, into the trust fund per year. So we're we're more or less telling giving you a guidance notion as opposed to um a promise that we'll be out there supervising the work, you know, with a microscope. That's not our function. Our function is to make a plan for you. And so we plan an amount that we think will be adequate without being more specific than reality allows us to be. But what we is that the uh Kevin's comes to the knees as well.
Right.
Of course, he's talking about this. It gives you, you know, practices that that kind of go down versus actually filling it up.
Right.
It's saying it's it's crazy, it's about.
Right.
Worse and worse. One, this proposal, Kevin was to get an outside source to come and do this. You know, we did a decent claim, we used nice material that was turning well. And do it right in the first time, and it goes, it's like a big spend, sure, I'm very supportive of this. Um I I'm feeling so, you give this right, you won't have to spend as much next year, this is a big expense, because it's been collapsed over the years.
And that's why I was saying that they had trouble finding somebody or.
Yeah.
But Jim Hopkins, I I do. He's he does great work. He's, you know, he does.
Last thing that that Kevin said to us earlier in the meeting was that he has a variety.
Yes.
Contacts within the contracting community. So we're trying to propose a a an overall amount, and we will lead it to them to get to the specifics about how it resulted in. So we've got a competitive situation and get the best buy for best paying.
That's fine, people.
Um is this Steve due to bill or is it the committee that receives?
No, we are a little bit.
No, that that'd be the administrative, city administration.
And um, okay, and so we still haven't found guidelines. Is the committee thought about adopting rules as it goes or or processes in regards to the funds? Or are you guys just want to say, you know, that's gotta be the the council's goal?
We under the condition you gave up two thousand nineteen, it's in justice with uh outline a program ready to use for approval on a more or less annual basis. And we give the council the discretion to say it's good, it's not good, rather than tie us up to a policy that makes decisions for us that might not become the rule two years from now.
And did you reach out, Anthony, to um discuss it? I'm curious about the fact that there is a trust and like trustees or something that might be.
Well, typically in a municipal setting, it's not the correct way to compare Winthrop. And then we invest those funds with some sort of investment firm, in this case, it's Kinnebeck Savings. Uh they report to us on an annual basis what the earnings of the of the trust have been. And it's up to the elected body in order to determine how and whether to use theirs. I would say yes, and and I think as I mentioned to some of you guys, uh once we get a budget approved, the next highest thing on Nick's list is coming up with a uh investment policy. And we've met with our bankers uh about that, and it would include this, yeah. And it will give you some guidance moving forward as to.
It's just one.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay, okay. All right, that answers.
As I say, it's some weather related, they just in a broad sense, this is what we'd like to accomplish this year. So our hope is by having this conversation with you now, we can begin soon and get further into the list. But if if for some reason we were to take more time to thinge through, and we weren't able to get an approval for something, then obviously the season gets shorter to get less time. So my hope is that you will approve our recommendations, right? But if you do not, perhaps we got a blessing on some portion of it, so that the work can begin, either to finish in Naples or to begin in East Winter or quarter, say to someone. We can, let's go forward with these gate repairs, let's get that.
Uh I do have one question. How would this? This obviously, these funds obviously wouldn't be, if we approved this, the funds wouldn't be paid out until it was necessary, right? I'll be, I'm just thinking that.
It depends upon the terms of the contract. So a lot of times, you know, a contractor will say it upfront when the job is.
You're just taking the memo again from Nick and the what the stock fund's doing and.
Well, I mean, if if uh I suppose one of the things that we could do is if we contract with someone, we could say we want to pay a hundred percent upfront while while our money's still good.
Or vice versa, right, wait for it to turn around and hopefully come back.
And we might be waiting a while then. In that, in that case, well, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, I mean, I mean, uh.
You shouldn't be putting off of work due to the market, but we can minimize the 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 risk of the impact.
Well, I I would say in that case, the smartest thing would be to pay everything upfront.
Using the trust too.
Huh?
You're from the, well, using the trust.
Yes, well, and what I'm saying is, um and there's nothing political about this statement, we're now in a bear market. And bear markets don't bounce back quickly. And so if we want to make maximum value of the value that we currently have in that trust, we should be looking to spend the money sooner rather than later.
When you pull it out, can we pull it out for an unassigned bond balance or something? Or whatever, whatever needs, I mean, a sound.
Well, but but even if we did that, Roy, it's still in an interest-bearing account.
But it can't go down.
Well, and yeah, it's not gonna lose its value.
It's the stock market.
Yes, I mean, yeah, just to some extent, yeah.
But we don't like like this is a lot of them go down, right? It's an interest-bearing account, it should be, uh, they should.
Yes, yes.
So my question then would be, is it something that we should be leaving in there like that? Do we have a way that? We can wait to tell. Well, no, I mean, is, does our, does the investment fund that it is in have a way to shrink in volatile, meaning the exposure?
Well, sure, you could, you could, that's more, you could change the mix so that you're investing more in bonds than you are stocks. But but to but to Roy's point, the stock market always goes up over time. And so in that instance, you may be losing value in the long, but maybe not in the next year, but 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 you don't.
We we don't know.
We don't want to play the market that way.
We shouldn't affect this decision or what.
I'm not dis- I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, if you want to make, Matt, I thought your question was, how can we make some value of the the dollars that we have? I think it would be to pay upfront.
Considering the market I'm talking about, if those estimates are higher than what you're requesting, would that be a request coming back to the council at some point later on in the summer?
Well, I think that's an object for you to tell us. Now, if we're five dollars over, you probably don't care, but fifty thousand. Now, if we're five dollars over, you probably don't care, but fifty thousand or a little bit, you're probably do.
Yeah.
Something in between, yeah, I would say. I'm not, I'm not the risk. I'd say if we approve.
Well, and, and really truly, the only big ticket item on here is the roads, and we're going to have to put that out to bid anyway. And so at that point, we're just following our purchase policy, and in that case, you guys would be the ultimate decision makers as to, as to how much to spend.
Public Works saying that this is something they don't have time to do?
I think it was something they have time to do, I think it was, they do it right.
But it was discussed.
It was discussed, it was just a lot of time, you know, seeing government, you know, it's up there. Uh, you know, the road thing, it's a big thing, you know, if you get down a big line side, it's showing, if you went down, it's a really sinking. It's a big distraction, but it needs something, it's just people in airports and, you know, the bees. Could recall and was it, you know, they passed you now, but I don't think next year it'll be this big and last, you know, it's. If you all see the crews tonight and then, you know, this goes on later on. Watch the market, who knows? This is something easy and it's a little bit fun for the assignment, so for me, I know it's a lot of money to spend, but. It, it, we're doing, depending on where it's supposed to be.
They can make a motion to authorize the, uh, funds, uh, up to the ask of one fifteen, seven forty-two. Uh, and also, uh, intend on addressing some sort of, um, rule making or policymaking or. Uh, discussion on what happens to the fund in the future and how the funds are spent out.
Second.
So authorized spending up to a hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars for the priorities as identified by the cemetery committee. Well, well, assuming we can get contractors on the job, you know, quick enough. Um, and then, uh, and in the meantime, we'll be formulating an investment policy.
Yeah, come up with some sort of plan for the, for the, the fund and the investment policy for that fund in the future.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're not getting into the same discussions of those just for your response there. We'll begin with the proposed budget for the code enforcement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work, gentlemen.
It's everyone, excellent. Pay attention, four slides, very quick. Pretty easy. This page thirteen, I'm going to just like that. Okay, yeah, sorry, thank you. Very long, but I have to be sorry, I know. Well, I have to do. I guess we're really on schedule to do this. Sixty-six percent through and seventy-five, so we're doing very well. Budget, yes, it's not a very big budget here. Twenty twenty-five increase, uh, that's strictly on fuel for my vehicle. Uh, that number hasn't changed since two thousand fifteen, so nine years later we. Changed that up just a little bit. It's been driving the change, increased mileage. Do plumbing inspections, do more inspections on. For work. And just recently completed, um, the town of Winton's first harbor master, so I am now a certified harbor master. That's exciting news. That's what I got. So I'm actually title. For me, the main state titles, you have to have a harbor master if you have anything to do with funds. So we have warrant ordinance, thus we needed a harbor master. So I completed a three-day course up in Castine. Earlier, uh, late, later in March, and, um, that's actually really well, that's a good class, I like to hear. So I don't have to worry about raising bridges and stuff, but. Yeah. Yeah, I think, I mean, it's a pretty small budget, so, um.
Do you folks have questions?
No.
I do have one question, it doesn't really seem quite different kind of. The, what are you seeing for a, uh, amount of building permits? Uh, do you see that it'll up, down, it'll kind of stay the same as previous years?
I think, but I'll be honest, new houses are still coming in. Where the two subdevelopments up at. What my friend Donald calls neighborhoods, uh, up on Sturman Hill, both sides are almost completely sold, and so they are, they are filling up, so. That's what we've got, um, for that portion of it. Um, it may generate is doing an expansion, some coal storage, so there's a little bit of commercial there. We were just talking to Don about that today, so it's pretty proud to see what's going on in this town with. You know, the new brewery on East Winter, Fifth Way, uh, EJ Soul Town. What about it?
What, what kind of projects do we have going on, I'm sure.
All right, so Solaria now finishing up would be Sawyer Project on Innesco Road. The one on Renner Hook Road is finished, the one on Winton Center Road is pretty much finished up. There is a new one on Hamilton Pond Road.
I was wondering if that's what's called.
Yeah, that one's starting to develop into a couple on Turkey Lane. That are in the process, just from the time they get approval to the time they get going, it's, it's a little bit of time. You got to get into the CMPQ and then they have to, you know, meet all their regulations, um, straighten out DEP, locally, planning board. It just, it takes a while from start to finish, so. I don't think we've done anything yet.
Do hopes?
No, no, no solar at this time, so I don't know, those subsidies are starting to dry up and that's going to slow that down.
Do you have to, do you have to permit, um, homeowners solar?
Yes, I do, rooftops are permitted, um. But they, they actually get an exemption, so typically when I give an application out or a, for a home or rooftop solar, then. Give you the application for exemption, so. Because this building is structured, it's something on a top, it's minimal fee wise.
But that is, that's handled administratively versus the, the planning.
Correct, that does not go on the planning board, those, those rooftops, as long as it's not for commercials, so they're not selling back that. For profit, stays greenstone, it's a little, I mean, issue of permits. Actually, I've done several of. I got two questions, Mark, one, I'll say first, really not like a question, but it's about the solar, you know, ordinance we created, it's somebody that we don't need, you do or don't know needs. We will cap on, I think we're going to like Creekspace, we're going to, count down for that? There is no, there is no cap on solar. I can, of course, not, oh, you must just kind of, one day, it's a question of walking ahead. Overall, in the budget, you know, uh, scientists, maybe in the, it went down. But what was that covering and why, why did we go down?
So previously, Mark, sir, as our addressing officer and as our local health officer, in order to ensure that you had maximum amount of time to address code enforcement responsibilities. Those duties were assigned to other people within your working.
I thought you that was just, but you know, was. Um, this one might have gone down here, that's. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Thanks, Mark.
Next, we're here for the twenty-third, then we're, we're on the show.
If they can. Time, I'm going to be done.
John, I'm just in town later. My information is as long as mine is. Um, so this year, the, um, budget request actually went down a little bit. Um, there was a little more meetings this year, so there was nothing expected on that. We are sixty-five percent of our budget. And then the amount is going down to eight point three percent. And the drivers of that change is that, um, the supply line was eliminated, that was for all the incidents, that went to, when general supply. Um, expector and then decreasing paper advertising. Um, it's ours education, there's training that the board, the board in the planning, they're both here at the state level, it used to be dedicated to person. They each attended, but they just recently, uh, created it so you could have a live webinar and people, so we had a group, a group training. And that's much less expensive, so, uh, that's why that, why it went down, it's not that they're going to be less trained, it's just more, more expensive. And then no, um, health services decreased. Sorry, that's all, that's.
No, that was a presentation.
Don, don't even.
I do? Oh, yes, that's right, so, um, for minutes, Anthony attended a training and, um, let me know that. Some communities are moving to do minutes with artificial intelligence. So we looked at this a little bit with you to, to see what options there are and he's going to do for the training and then that's, we're hoping that that will be something that we're going to. This is a good question.
You folks have any questions?
I do, I think this is where Jim's side of the question.
Yeah.
If we just look at it on the first one, the three thousand dollar site, thirty-two forty versus going down three thousand, what is that on?
So, uh, planning board members get paid on our purposes.
Oh. Okay, that's not, that's not just the planning department.
No, those are the planning board members.
Every member attend every meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, we almost cut down after fifty, so.
Okay, I was going through some of my older notes from last year, um. And so I was looking at instead of this, this is the twenty-five budget, I have to update our maps. Uh, because it happened, we did it, so we're C I technologies. Or was up here.
No, we actually, uh, have a meeting more to do that.
It is that actually, um, we're about to allow, so, um.
That's digital, sorry.
Yes, you'll be able to flip in a parcel and see these information associated with it, like you can see in a tax part. You can see owner information, um, you know, history of sale, all of, uh, everything that's in tax parts, it's going to be very helpful for me.
Yeah, and, and at the same time, in fact, Haley Ward was here just last week, uh, putting some, uh. Finer touches on the, the tax map itself, the, the, the paper map that people can come into the office and look at. Nick, do you recall if we used a function for that? Yeah, we did, we had a capital reserve for that. Whether or not we used, uh, dedicated ARPA funds to it, I'm not recalling that. No, we have expended all of our ARPA funds now.
And it's supposed to give us a discount, only we're able to their negotiations in the state and the entity was involved in that, so they're checking to us. Um, I guess another appointment tomorrow, I'm looking forward to resolve that by then, but otherwise we're just waiting to get back from the, with the.
They promised us something and we're holding to it.
Sure.
So during that, I'm just going to be your software.
So, so the tax maps will be updated on an annual basis, and so, um, let me see if that's, Don, do you recall it's that?
There's an S three there, so I'm still.
No, no, that's not what they're talking about, so they're talking about, uh, Haley Ward. And I forget, Nick, do you recall where we put that in the budget? Uh, it is, it's in the admin budget. So that's kind of a big project, and we're not anticipating any such big projects in the coming year.
We need to spend it.
We, we haven't spent it yet. That's right. Uh, we don't anticipate having, having to do that until FY twenty-seven. Uh, and because it's going to take them a while for the complication project to be done, and so.
Annual fee?
Twelve hundred would be the annual fee, but that's not what this is budgeted for this year. This is budgeted just in case we need a consultant for anything else that we might encounter.
For this, this evening, so this year, budget, there's a good shy of nine, four thousand dollars. And, uh, that budget, so if you were setting five, it's in the first week. I have that budget. That's as a result of. Our recovery, the evaluation. So this year we have seen free staff budget, uh, and it's not as much as what we had initially, what may be showing in your books, but that's. Uh, when we got to two thirds, when we got to the three fourths on the point of the fiscal year.
Hear what he's saying.
Well.
Well, I mean, I want, I need to hear, go ahead, sorry, I can't hear what he's talking.
So when we got to three fourths way in the fiscal year, we sort of recalibrated on sort of how we were trending, so at the. At the beginning of, at halfway through the year, we were trending towards, uh, about a hundred twelve thousand. Just for the assistance alone that included administrative costs. Three fourths of the year, that reduced a little bit of the last quarter, and so now we're projecting a hundred thousand dollars, uh, for this year, so we're able to have a lot, uh, by about twenty thousand dollars. Nonetheless, it isn't, it does, this does represent a fifty-eight percent. But it's not all bad. Um, the drivers of the change, uh, increasing assistance from setting two thousand to a few thousand dollars based on this year's experience, of course. Who knows what next year will, will hold, but, but, uh, through, as I said, through the course of the year, we're trending towards a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, one of the other talks that we are investing in is a software called Wellpack, it is used for state reporting. So every month we have to compile a report to send to the state in order to get our reimbursement back. And as you can imagine, with the number of applications that we're receiving, it's a pretty windy report. This will help to streamline that process, it is, as I said, you statewide, and one of the great things about this is. You can cross-reference your GA cases statewide with other communities that are using this software. So we'll be able to tell if someone has applied for technical assistance in another community, thereby making them eligible in our community. Uh, this is something that we learned about, City of Augusta, the Bay for a brief time, we're. And then lastly. As I talked with you guys before, we're. as I talked with you guys before, we're restructuring one of the positions here at the town office, the executive assistant position. It's going to transfer at the beginning of school year. I mean, to a general assistance administrator, so we had been hiring someone part time, we'll do that. We're going to have the person that we hire do that plus sort of the office assistant for the city government planner. And so overall, between those responsibilities, that does represent a cost savings. No, so this job will be full time, so dedicated between general assistance and office assistant for Mark and for Don. Previously, our RTA administrator was just.
Um, the part time position, we never really, I mean, this part time person was, was, was supposed to look at the cases that we, the, the, the folks that were receiving general assistance to find out if in fact they were applying for jobs.
They do, yes, we do that.
You do that. So why is this? Like, why is the cost so high?
Cause it's six hundred ninety five dollars and five cents per month.
But aren't you guys recouping some of that by having some of these folks work?
So so we hired people and jumping pointing to apply for jobs within a mile or two is.
Mm hmm.
Sure that. Jumping through who just applied for jobs willy nilly everywhere to qualify for these, as you said, I don't know, we can't do that anymore. You can apply for jobs within a mile or two, that includes Augusta and Boston. And so, and so what we do is we thought she was following up with those employers to see if a job had actually been offered to them. And if someone has offered a job.
Have, if they don't take it, they lose service, yeah.
So, so one other point to that point is past couple weeks, Nick and I have been processing all the general assistance applications. So one of the things that we are doing to require each of those people apply for jobs for the town and the schools, because the schools is always hiring cafeteria workers, substitute cats. So that's one of the ways that we're trying to hold people accountable. Um, some of them may not qualify to work in the schools if they have criminal backgrounds.
Right.
And they do do criminal checks on those people. It's one of the ways we're trying to hold people a little bit more.
But we still, does the state still acquire six of them? Window when they enter?
It's, it's actually one month, so.
One month.
Uh, so for the first thirty days, they are not allowed work, so they focus on their that thirty days that we do require them to apply for, apply jobs for.
You have a budget, you have no salaries. You know, we bought it for that hard time verse, combining key positions together. Do you take away on the other end, the other assistance position? Because your salary went up to forty five thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars.
So, so between having an executive assistant, a town clerk and offices assist, or let's see, executive assistant, GA administrator, town clerk. And those three positions combining them into two, so there is no overall cost savings.
Yeah, I'm just putting it all into.
That's, that's correct.
Into this budget.
That's correct.
So on the other budget lines, be able to open the year budget lines, production.
That's right.
Hours.
So if you go and look at my budget now, the town manager budget, you'll see zero of that.
Oh, we see. Okay. Will we also?
So what are the, what's the breakdown of those to that point?
Well, yeah, that and some of them do that. With that, are we still paying Augusta? So you guys are doing, I just heard.
We're not paying, we're not paying Augusta as an equal person to give those responsibilities. We'd be back in house. So Nick and I are spending approximately four to six hours per week.
So if you're taking four to six hours a week, assisting that, and we're hiring somebody, so don't be doing that for about four to six hours over the year.
No, because we, because we don't have the time to give assistance in a two week chunk. Give it in a month, one long chunk. So the, uh, the GA administrator will be checking on people every two weeks, so that you're going to have to reapply every two weeks to ensure that you're going out on your job applications that you're supposed to get off as well.
So we're back to thirty days. What, what was the determining factor for bringing that second up?
Uh, Augusta was said they didn't no longer help us because of their own caseload. And there was a cost associated with it, so we're trying to reduce the cost to the town.
Does this position stay in this budget moving forward?
Well, that'll ultimately be up to next year's council.
So it's split between like, like from the planning.
Administratively, that matters. So, so additionally, I mean, these things are important to point out. Nick and I are of like minds on this point that we should be budgeting the reimbursement that we get as revenue. And so for the first time are going to be doing that. So this budget also includes an offset to the hundred thousand dollars that we would be paying in assistance for the seventy thousand dollar on revenue side. Now, I have sent to you guys at points some legislation that is pending in the legislature. And to just not talk about this on a weekly basis, that would reduce our recovery residence rental assistance to zero if that legislation makes it status. Uh, we continue to try to stay on top of that.
What, what's that bill number?
Two fifteen.
Two fifteen?
Two fifteen.
Twenty.
One five.
One five.
And we're going to be.
Now, in fact, we met you last week.
I'm going to check right now.
You didn't even have a date yet, but with the next year.
I definitely hear a day emails, so simply the main way they.
The thing about that is that the committee has taken interest in it. Everyone recognizes that we had a unique situation here in Winthrop. And the bill as it currently is being proposed is to address our situation solely. And then moving forward, the legislature is going to look at addressing more systemically the issue of general assistance and recovery.
Been tabled as of March nineteenth, so.
It was tabled at that point after, because the committee wanted more, more work done.
So, and in this whole thing, you just talked about it again. You've got a big team that right, right gone very well. Having some people in place, you have to have years to plan. Um, you know, I could have now, yes, certainly is the clear that you and I sort of thing. I really now thinking of the brain and just breaking on the table for us to look at, do we really need these other portions? And I know you'll say, yes, you're on the, um, having somebody in team, so it takes some of the work, I know you need somebody to help, so if this GA, so I'm going to I would really need to build that executive assistant type of position, so.
It, uh, it really depends upon how uh, productive you want your, your current forty million restorative or media plan.
I just, it worked well, worked for that, seemed like you had things to shift, right? Which was seen by you, you grew caps of them and that it gave you a good for that. Um, I just in my mind, I'm just thinking about it, just putting it out there, uh, the rest of the council, so I'm just kind of considering being, being go that. Where we're set the ball, the time of day, I mean, I think that really trying to make sure we don't raise, raise or increase our taxes when we have to raise and increase the budget in one we have to. Um, and what we have to do for, for people of wages and insurance and that sort of thing, but I really hope everybody goes to these, you include in the mental health credits. How awesome, can we get by one more year doing some stuff we didn't do? Um, within the budget stuff we had had last year, so.
Well, and I think too, in my mind, having this as a full time position makes it more likely that we'll get someone good to administer our general assistance, because we totally lucked out, G D Martin. We will probably never see the likes of her again, so we do have a lifetime certified, uh, GA administrator. And retired from municipal work, he's just living for a sideline to do that. So I think otherwise it is pretty, and, and you have to go through a fairly rigorous training in order to do the, the general assistance. And you need the experience in order to get really good at that, you know, Nick and I would not profess to be that, we are good at this job, but and we know how to do it in the world, right?
I mean, that's great, I guess, I just look, if, if this does, you know, LA didn't do that, keep that fast.
No, that's a game, that's a game changer, right?
So we have something completely different, so.
Yeah.
Just be mindful of it, that's all, I, I appreciate it, it was hard work, I just, I just trying to make sure, I'm trying to really get just that, that where we can keep our budget so far down, we obviously know there's other ends of this, of the town, like stolen person, additional monies and whatnot. It's just, uh, for me, like, when people in this city, and we have a goal to seemingly keep climbing every year.
If, if Tenebrous's bill passes all this information I just gave to you, you can water that through. Thanks for that. Then we'll be able to engage you.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, question or comments for general? Thank you very much, Andy. All right, well, we want to add one place that in consideration of December, before this first been important, uh, directed, is we will give up the remarks. Meeting. Motion?
Some move.
Okay. Any discussion, all in favor? Or in favor? In important game consideration, we are going to be going by this person once.
So.
Any discussion? All in favor? Consideration of number twenty twenty five, this person warrants.
Some move.
That is.
All in favor? And fifty eight, consideration of recommendations from the appointments today.
I mean, four, well. We have three renewable and one new. Um, which for him has liked to be on conservation commission. Um, he's the new champion, and most of us here are familiar with this. Um, and the renewal that our, I'm not even here to deal with, it'll be district, Lord of Thesee, Thessalonians, we need, and Robert Henson, John, Lord of Appeals. I would recommend that they all be appointed to those committees.
Does that work?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Uh, other business, I'll let you public.
Last week, pardon me, with the public works director and town manager over in Monmouth, because there is an interest in potentially partnering with them on some operations at our transfer station. Uh, one of the things I made clear for our friends in Monmouth is there has to be something in it for Winthrop. And that would be either, you know, more than covering the cost of any service that we would be providing. And or, uh, an oper, well, an opportunity to have the transfer station open at more convenient hours for our citizens. So just want to put that on your radar screen, nothing has been decided. So, so they're interested in in us taking over their demolition waste. And so, and, and so there are a lot of logistics to work out with that. So we'll just, we're, we're going to talk and see where it leads.
All my residents bringing their demo to Winthrop, or are you talking in Winthrop, just like dealing with, yeah, a fair demo on their side?
No, they're coming to our facility.
We need to go there.
Um, they talked about, they, they talked.
Busy on staff.
Understood.
Yeah, but it's not full up.
Understood, but that's one of the things that we talked about is maybe we allow that to happen, but only during certain days of the week. You know, and, and like I said, to me, the, to me, the upside for us would potentially be offering more convenient times, citizens, because really truly, for most working folks, Saturday is the only convenient time for them.
Wasn't it there?
Yeah, I'm very much buying, right?
Okay, okay.
He's with the demo, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Is it not on my booth, so? Right. Yeah, I'm just saying, just throwing out that in the. Yeah.
Yeah, just so you folks.
I, I kind of think I'm prepared to trust Kevin and Anthony to pretty much make these decisions in our best interest.
Thank you, Andy, I appreciate your confidence. I like Jim and Roy.
I'm still.
No, 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 it, it, no, we, we will, if, if we want to do something different, we will bring a recommendation for y'all's consideration. Let's see, was this last week? Yeah, because today's on Monday. I did resubmit applications for congressional delegated spending for our radio communications upgrade project, so you know, things are so volatile right now in DC, who knows, but give it, give it the old college try. And just a reminder, we, our next meeting, we're actually get a little break from one another. It will be on the twenty eighth and we'll continue some budget discussions. And so that is one that I think is going to be a really interesting discussion, because we'll be talking about capital improvements. And so I would encourage you to spend some time with your capital improvement plan that's in your, in your budget and think about what it is that are priorities and how much we want to spend. So I, I will tell you, in, in that regard, what you ideally like to do is keep your capital spending sort of flat year over year, so it doesn't peak and valley.
It is. We will have a big, of course.
We'll have to bond it at that point. Yes. Uh, speaking of money and budgets, I know there's some of you who have interest or questions in, uh, in the school budget. And I talked with the superintendent on Friday, she is out of the office until Friday of this week. But she is more than welcome to entertain an audience with any of you, you folks who might have questions, because she really wants to answer your questions. Yeah, as long as we don't have four of you there at the same time, yeah. Very good. So some of you signed papers for Matt Culpits, uh, this, this evening, he's going to submit his nomination papers for the charter commission. Uh, we don't have anyone who's actually turned in papers as of yet, so if he knows some folks in the community, you think would be good. Uh, encourage them, but Friday is the deadline for turning in your nomination papers. And I checked with the town attorney, and if we don't have a slate of six candidates, then the council can then appoint, um, you know, however many that we need in order to get up to six. Uh, just a couple of things about things that were mentioned in, uh, in public comments. So Linda, to answer your question, the MMA did back some legislation, uh, in the legislature to increase county jail funding. Uh, we were trying to establish a baseline of twenty percent of what is spent on the state correctional system. And then have that increase year over year in conjunction with however much the, the state prison budget increase, that's how much the state or the county budget appropriation would be. So, you know, I, I don't think that that has been fully decided, but, but we have worked on that issue. And then also to speak to Aaron's proposal about this golf, just a reminder that we just chatted about this very, very briefly at one point here and agreed, because it is on school property, we're going to let the school board sort of take the lead on that. And if they're comfortable with that being on school property, then it would come back to us since it would, it'd be on town property, so. Uh, anyway, that's all I have.
Just, just one, um, did you have time to do anything with the middle issue? We really shouldn't go into detail unless we're probably.
Let's, let's talk about that in my mind, Andy.
Yeah.
So I just want to add one, I didn't. G, Nationality Act, and so that's a pending application term. And so I just, uh, have. And so I just, uh, have these, some agreement from the task force model that Anthony printed off. That, um, I'm just gonna hand out to each of the counselors, just to review as that may come on. Uh, that was something that was certainly the government. That Facebook, movies page, and then, um, so it's, it's something that's pending right now, they come to the council at some point, so just to do some research on that and understand about.
Emailed you folks earlier in the day, that if you would like an, uh, audience with the police chief, then we're happy to, to facilitate that.
If we do that, though, would it, would we wanna do it at the next meeting, given all this stuff?
That's probably gonna pick up a lot of time, so, uh, and you know, some of you may be interested in this, some not, and so, and so I would just say, if you have an interest we're happy to sit down and talk with the police chief about it.
Good question, that is.
Twenty-seven percent. Initially, it was forty-eight percent until, uh, some of us, Shannon and Aaron included, went and pitched to fit at some other public hearings. And in fact, in fact, as.
They changed, they, they did get rid of M B three as a program. And we agree is, uh, doctor, sorry, Dr. Tim Bayes, President, he did is gone, they got rid of that.
As for the, the, the new budget?
Yeah.
I hadn't heard that. Well, that's Nick, while Mr. Petrovsky was talking. To go to the county's website, and they still did not have the new budget, uh, and so, and so we don't know what, we don't know what the town's appropriation is, but we'll, we'll follow along.
Well, listen to a gentleman.
All in favor? All right, all in favor of seven fifty-three?